It's all set.
Going?
It's going.
Yeah, yeah. Action please, question do they have fuel or even the fertilizer themselves? Even though they produce a lot of the meat.
Yeah. Stupid on that one.
There it is.
I mean, we should, I wish that had been done.
Nope.
Maybe if we can do it cheaper. I mean, I think we could do something better than that. Anyways, I guess we're all here.
Seven twenty-nine and a half.
It's gotta be. All right.
I will be used to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Probably should have called this meeting to order prior to that. I apologize. Um, let's do a roll call. I am here. Vice Chairman Darling here. Secretary Anita Strube.
I'm here.
Kenneth Howard here. James Turner is excused. Daryl Nichols.
Here.
And Leroy Ziski.
Present.
Present. All right. Uh, has everybody had an opportunity to look at the agenda?
The date's April fourth, not seventh.
Yeah, well, we all made it, except the one that nobody wanted to make it.
Yeah.
Very good. Any additions or corrections? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion except the agenda's presented.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ziski, seconded by Howard. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, approval of the amendments from our last meeting, March seventh.
I do have one, um, at the beginning where we did not have the roll call for the Board of Trustees. However, um, it should be Michael Pankowski and not Mike Pankowski.
Okay. Well, we started that meeting with the board and then expanded that idea.
Right.
First.
However, I did put the name on there and he would like it changed to Michael.
All righty. Is there anything else we'd like to amend or change? We'll approve the minutes. I have a motion to approve minutes.
I'll support that.
Leroy Ziski seconded it. Any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Before we continue, I want to thank our, our secretary for doing such a good job. I went through and she followed everything I wrote down, so I did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, thanks Anita.
Kind of a good meeting and I thought it was well.
I appreciate that. Okay. I do.
All right. So, let's proceed with the first citizen's time. Nina?
Um, I just wanted to, uh, point out a couple of things. With the minutes when the motion was made to open the public hearing, um, there was actually no roll call or no, no, um, finalization of that motion. There was no question of who there was a motion to start the public hearing, a second, and then it, there was nothing more. Um, so I just want to make sure that it's mindful of you guys to, when you start a motion, to make sure you take the vote because there was no voting after that. Um, and just as a side note for future, um, you don't technically need a motion to open a public hearing. You just open it, but, um, if you would, save the time that way because it's on recording, it's on video, that way it can match up perfectly with the minutes.
Okay. All right, I think I understand. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Colin from Apex Clean Energy and Daily Solar. I'll be very brief. Um, we're planning on happening, uh, having a public open house at the beginning of May. Uh, we're shooting for May fifth. Uh, just wanted to make everyone aware of that. We're gonna be sending out notices and invitations, but just wanted to make mention of that.
Okay.
Where is that, voted in then?
We're hoping to host it at the Mylan High School there. Uh, where we can have plenty of room for everybody.
Is that just London Township or Mylan also?
That is for Mylan and London Townships. And we, our intention is to notice it to all county presidents.
Good. Thank you for that. Anything else in first citizens time? Hearing none, I guess we'll move on. Thank you. Um, first thing under unfinished business is review of the master plan. I'm not sure exactly what we was gonna review, to be honest. We've been talking about getting together, having a meeting to go over just that. We've all looked at it, I'm not sure it needs any major changes, but. Where are we at on this, Vice Chair?
We're, we're required to review this periodically, I think it's about every five years.
Right.
And we all received the copy of it back here, what, a month ago?
Two.
Two months ago now.
Two months ago.
And so.
That were me.
And it's, it's like reading the Old Testament, so it takes a little while. So, I don't know how many Plan Commission members have dug into it yet. But we need to really get a little bit comfortable with it before we come in and really start talking about it. We almost need a workshop, uh, just to simply focus just solely on that and do the fact that we've got, site plans and some other things here tonight.
That is what we talked about two months ago. We talked about that and then we weren't sure we would have budget, have special meetings. And Supervisor shared me and she was gonna set us up so we would have, uh, it seems like four extra meetings, three or four extra meetings. So, we'd have our twelve regular meetings and we could use one of them at any time to do that. Is that your understanding?
That, that's my understanding.
So, I had to find my master plan book because it was buried under a couple of farm magazines on the end table next to my chair. I have been going through it, but I'm not gonna tell you I've read the whole darn thing.
I do have a lot of the socioeconomic things that are at the very beginning of it, um, changed with the stuff that I delivered today. It has a twenty-twenty information on it.
Okay. Yes, that's what, that's what this stuff is.
Yeah, that's what I've been working on and I was stuff I had given previously also. So, it just needs to be all combined where it goes in the book.
This is all from CIPCOG then?
CIPCOG and, uh, Census Bureau.
Okay.
All right.
Excellent Anita, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I remember we talked about that was one of the things that definitely has to be updated, don't it? Well, who's looked through enough of it to feel comfortable to, set up a workshop on this? Or else I'm gonna say we wait till June as well.
Well, and, and I, I don't know, uh, because I don't believe that budget's gonna be totally done. Tomorrow is the third and final budget hearing. So, uh, I know that there's workshop meetings that are in that budget. Uh, that budget is not complete as of yet.
Okay.
It won't be until tomorrow. So, uh, you might wanna wait till the next meeting when everything is finalized before we start setting up workshops and the budget's not been finalized. That's my thoughts, I mean.
That's fine, Mark.
I would agree that, you know, settle up the workshops sometime later in June.
That'd be fine with me. So, we can wait till next month to do that.
Yeah.
If we make sure we have budget approval to do that. Does that sound fair to everybody, Leroy?
Sounds good.
So, this is your pleasant reminder from your chairman to keep studying and, uh.
Guarantee cure insomnia.
Man, I don't know. I've tried. So. All right, then. So, we need to table it or just set this aside for now?
Move the table till, to discuss in June or May, maybe.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Made a motion to table this review until next month by Doug Darling, seconded in by Daryl Howard. All right. Next on unfinished business is section one, Article one point oh.
Should we ask who's in favor and all of that?
Oh, oh, yeah. I guess it was a table, so.
Yeah, but.
Is there more discussion?
If there's a motion.
Simple majority.
So, uh, yeah. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Anita.
You're welcome.
All right. Section one, Article one point oh nine.
Yeah, I, I brought it up, so I guess we should talk about it.
Okay.
At the last meeting, I see the synopsis of what I understood happened. I was, um, a trustee on the board when we approved this modification. And then, it appears that the Township Board have, has been using the non amended information. So, I stopped by and talked to Penny accidentally and then we spent an hour going through stuff. And I'm not too sure where she wound up at with all the emails and everything that went back and forth. Barb Henley was supervisor at the time and, um, not saying anything against Barb, but there was a lot of confusion trying to make people understand the proper process to go through to amend that ordinance. Now, I was a township clerk for twenty years here on London Township. So, I was well aware of the procedures because we had been through it a number of times. Doug Darling was supervisor for a time being and he was quite aware of the procedures. And we felt we have, we did it the correct way. So, one of the problems has been that we've never created an updated zoning book, which we need to do at some point in time. But we still have a couple items which we'll talk about after the meeting and, and the commissioner's time. We'll talk about that at that time rather than take up time now. Um, so, as far as I know, you're supposed to be doing this according to, um, our previous, um, ordinance enforcer, it didn't abide by what Conley, our attorney said. So, I'm not sure, um, maybe Doug can elaborate if he would.
Yeah, I am kind surprised that sometimes the township can't find some of the records. But there was a public hearing for this back on March seventh of twenty sixteen when we changed the injunction action to prosecuting as a criminal mis- misdemeanor. And, uh, this is, it mirrors the ordinance that Exeter Township had at the time. There's a recommendation of Conley Crosby, the township attorney at the time, to change it from a municipal civil infraction because it sped up the process, uh, was less cost to the township in order to do it for executing it. And so, the Township Plan Commission, she forwarded the information directly to the Plan Commission. We had it, we enacted it, uh, back in that timeframe. And that, like I say, I've got just, you know, I've got the public hearing portion. I've got the, the draft ordinance from what we mirrored off of, uh, changing, just change that word is all we basically did. And then I do have the February eighth, twenty sixteen Township Board Minutes where the board had taken action and recommended that Plan Commission, you know, do and execute this. And so, we did do that and it was changed. And so, it's surprising to me that, uh, that the township did not update their book for what the ordinance enforcer was operating apparently under the old process. Because I know that, uh, Mr. Youngblood had brought up, but he was talking about changing it back from what we have with regarding the, uh, where to put the word, the, the criminal misdemeanor or guilty of misdemeanor process. And so, that's where, when we talked about this last month is to have, then I, what I would say right now is that we formally send this to the township attorney for her, for, uh, Bondi to review our present ordinance twenty, or excuse me, one point oh nine, which is for what we had amended back in twenty sixteen that changed that. And make sure that is still accurate for what she wants for executing, uh, the township and being able to enforce our ordinances that we have and do it effectively and efficiently. And so, I would, I would recommend, I'll, I'll make it as a formal motion that we send one point oh nine to the attorney to review and draft any corrections from what we had in twenty sixteen if any changes need to be done. Otherwise, we've got this done correctly and it just needs to be updated in the book and the township, uh, officials need to be, be in suit to what the ordinance is. So, I, I just move that if there's support.
I do have a question because when I was looking through it, um, you know, this was all in twenty sixteen that I had printed out for all of you, that there was a public notice, um.
Yep.
And all that. However, does that have anything to do with the ordinance, uh, twenty-twenty dash zero-two dash zero-one, um, municipal penalty, civil infractions and appearance tickets ordinance?
Yeah, 'cause see, that's why I was kinda curious that you had this laying up here. I'm like, okay, this, this one is kinda news to me, so I'm trying to.
Yeah, this.
Have a chance to read over what you just put in.
Yeah, this was printed in the paper, I know.
That, that didn't come through the finding.
Yeah, no.
What's it ordered, you on board?
Was that the meeting after the call? When did that go before the board?
Well, it was passed in, um, February tenth of twenty twenty.
It's before you were there.
You said it was.
And this was, yeah, that, that's exactly what this is, is the printing from the Monroe News.
So, this is a standard ordinance. It's not part of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So.
I'm fairly certain that had something to do with when CES was in here running the building department. I believe they needed that in order to, um, go after the people with dangerous buildings.
Write the tickets, yeah.
I'm fairly certain that's what that ordinance was from.
Yep, I remember that.
And that should be in miscellaneous ordinance book, not in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So, now we have to check to see if this matches what the attorney says. So, maybe we should.
Yep, have her, have Bondi review it. And if it is accurate for what we did back in twenty sixteen because it was under the recommendation of the township attorney that we did do that change. And, and we did, we executed it and they had the public hearing and the whole process. So, the question is for her to review it. If it's still correct, then it stands and the, the township needs to update their books of what they're operating off of, uh, that that was a certain, they were operating under by not using the twenty sixteen. But on the same note, if something has changed in the state law in the last six years that will help out a municipality for enforcing the ordinances and she knows about it or something that we should change, then let's do it now being that we've dug into the scene at this point.
Okay, so send her everything that we have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give her that. The old one that was on page one dash twelve and then give her the, uh, information from what we had passed back in twenty sixteen. Also, give her the copies of the, uh, the public hearing notice, information that was back in March. Where did I put that thing? March of twenty sixteen, so that way they have it all.
Okay.
Yeah, give her this one too, because that's.
Okay.
To make sure that nothing is crosswords with that.
Yes.
Okay, so, everything that we have.
I guess everything you gave us.
Okay.
That pertains to that.
Okay, and what Leroy had sent also.
Yeah, you can help her out with that list because that was too much of a time, time sequence.
Yeah.
How all that happens.
Okay.
You, Anita, you've got the, the copy of the meeting, public hearing notice from March seventh, twenty sixteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't have to give it to you, good. I killed a lot of trees.
Well, supports, uh, motion, if you wanna, would you review?
Yeah, I wanna update your motion a little better.
Move to forward our current ordinance one point oh nine. The current and previous ordinance to her to review. And if any changes need to be made to our current ordinance, which was approved back in twenty sixteen.
Do you wanna reference this other township appearance ticket? Would that be effective?
Okay, you've got what, that's what we, what we changed to. We basically just took and changed our ordinance by changing from municipal civil infraction to that, uh, criminal misdemeanor. That was basically the only thing that we changed in that ordinance that's on page one dash twelve.
Correct, but this changes it back from a misdemeanor to a civil infraction.
Which one? The one that they did in twenty?
The one that they did in twenty twenty.
No, it's not the first page.
I, I thought the reason why, the people also, um, so I, I believe that's the reason why, the zoning enforcer chose to go this route. So, you go there, had enforcement itself a little bit.
And which sometimes sets you up into other legal issues.
Yeah, yeah.
Which we're, which we're in. And that's why, part of why this was done, so that they could execute it faster in a court and take place. There's nothing that prevents the ordinance enforcer from going out, doing his job, talking to the people, trying to correct the situation. But when it gets to the point where it doesn't correct, then it goes to the attorney. And when the attorney gets it, she's gonna follow this, uh, this portion of the ordinance. And that gives her more flexibility to enforce it.
Yeah.
The other way it's, it was.
No, I agree with you a hundred percent. I'm just saying we might should just send this over to her also, just so.
Yeah, that's why I said, yeah, send, send her a holdup so that way she can evaluate and say, what we currently have in twenty sixteen is correct. What we had before is, wasn't effective. And also minimizes for employees getting the township in trouble for other legal issues, which we have enough of. A few people got funds redone for free that we paid for as taxpayers.
That's right. All right. So, can I get a second on Doug's motion?
Second.
Leroy seconded the motion to say this to the attorney. Uh, if there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right. A quick click in there.
It's green, green now.
Yeah. Is that it? All right. I guess at this point, we're on to new business then. Um, let me put this one away. The, uh, Mylan Dragway Site Plan. Everybody got a copy of it this evening, I believe?
I did put one of the maps, uh, the site plan maps in back here on the table if others wanted to look at it.
I believe we have representatives from the Dragways eager and are willing to visit with us.
Happy to be here.
Happy to be here. That's good. All right. Excuse us, I mean, looked at it for a few minutes before the meeting, but really didn't see this until tonight. So, if anybody has a question, all wishes to speak.
I would welcome the, uh, the new owners to, to, with us, what they presented, what they're.
I would too.
Looking to do and what, what you, explain what, what your intentions are.
What we're looking at.
Hi, my name's Jeff Schroder. I'm here on behalf of the applicant to sort of present the site plan. Um, I'd like to draw your attention to the proposed plan, um, from the applicant that was included with the site plan. And this addresses all aspects of the operation. And I think the most important thing to point out right now is that there are no real sort of major changes being proposed from the existing site. Um, ingress, egress, parking, all those things will remain the same. No structural changes, no changes to traffic, circulation, parking and the like. There are currently plans, uh, for upgrades at the facility, um, and a lot of repairs that are necessary. But in terms of our normal general sort of site plan issues, uh, that we like to address, um, there are no changes from, from the prior use, from the prior user. Um, I've been working closely with the ownership here and the ownership is very committed to working hand in hand with the township and the community to make sure that, uh, this is a good partnership, uh, that will bring not the business back to the, to the facility, but helping the surrounding community. I heard a remark earlier, maybe people might stop by at the local store and that's certainly something, uh, we hope happens as well. Um, so, in addition, uh, for later this month, the facility would like to conduct a chassis certification event on the weekends, April twenty-third and twenty-fourth. This is, uh, an event that would allow owners to bring their vehicles to be inspected for safety and certification. There would be no racing or any type of that activity going on at that time. But it's important for, uh, folks who wanna have their chassis inspected and certified to have that done, it's a safety event and really wouldn't put any additional burden, I think, on the surrounding, uh, community. Um, we've addressed all the issues here. Again, this is sort of like a status quo site plan we're trying to carry forward. And, um, we've gone through, uh, when I say we, I say Pam Merlow here, who has been to the township many times digging through the files. I've researched all the files going back twenty years to make sure we're not missing anything, uh, with prior reviews and approvals. And so, we believe this is now ready for your consideration and we respect the request of your approval. We're here to answer any questions. And I also know, uh, Harry, Harold Bullock is here and he just would like to also address, uh, the Plan Commission as well.
I'm just gonna chicken out of this. Um, I just wanna say, uh, just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Harold Bullock. Uh, my partner Perry Merlow and I recently purchased Mylan Dragway. And, um, just can't tell you how happy we are to, to be part of the restoration of the, of the amazing, amazing venue. Uh, it's our intention to build back the facility to its former glory. Uh, we would like Mylan Dragway to be a place that everyone in the local community and all of our drag racing family can be proud of. We're not a big corporation, we're just regular working guys here. Um, Perry started out pushing concrete in a wheelbarrow with his dad. He was able to turn that into a very successful business, they've employed hundreds of people. He recently retired from that business and was looking for something to do. And, uh, this will be an opportunity for him to, to do something he's really good at and spend more time with his family. We, we both intend to make this a family project. My wife Liz, uh, who's too young to retire. She's still. She's still working another job for now, but, um, uh, and Perry's wife Pam, who's already making things happen in the, in the Mylan Dragway office. They're both gonna be involved in our day-to-day operations. Uh, our children and my grandchildren, I'm a grandfather, are very excited to be a part of this. Um, and just wanted you to know that we're not here trying to step on your way of life. I'm a big fan of London Township in the Mylan area. And I absolutely love the farming community and the country atmosphere here. Uh, so much that I purchased property near the racetrack and I can't wait to get my house built and, and be down here and be a London Town, Township resident. Uh, I want us all to be on the same team. We wanna work with the residents through the township to create a place that we're all happy with. As for me, I'm a gearhead, I'm a car guy, I've been a mechanic my whole life. As for me, I'm a gearhead, I'm a car guy, I've been a mechanic my whole life, uh, I was that little kid pushing trucks around, making the engine sounds, I still play with trucks in the mud, it's just much bigger now. Ask anyone who knows me, uh, everything I have, everything I do has something to do with a hot rod or race car or truck or boat, I just love anything with an engine, I've been very fortunate my whole life, being able to do a job that I love. Uh, this racetrack is absolutely perfect for me, I cannot think of anything else in this world that I would rather do. I've been coming down here since I was a teenager, I first came down here in the eighties for the high school nationals, and I've been in love with the place ever since, I've always considered Mylan Dragway my home track, as many other Detroit area racers do also, and I cannot wait to get the track back open and get our local racers back home, thank you.
And Mr. Bullock, when he moves to town, he will pay for his own pond, we talked about that earlier.
Welcome to London Township.
All right.
I do have one question, I saw a temporary band stage here on the corner, that's something that I don't remember on the drag strip before, is that something?
That is some, uh, that is, that is something that we have on, um, in, in this, in this sheet right here, yours is much smaller than mine, but it says potential future plans, so we were thinking that like if we had a London Township Day, that we would like to be, you know, have those drop in trailers for a band and have a band, you know, or around Fourth of July, or, you know, when fireworks, so nothing that's gonna be, we're not building, uh, a stage or anything, we just wanna, we thought we'd have, you know, a local band or something to bring more, like during a community day, so, on page, I think it starts on page three. Talks about potential future plans, uh.
Yeah.
We would like to have a pole barn, but we're not doing that this year, we, we just received, uh, possession of the property December twentieth, so we just are working fast and furious through this lovely Michigan winter period, it's out there every single day, um, but we need a pole barn built, put our stuff in, um, but that's not going up today, we would like to have a London Township Mylan Community Day, um, to host, to host, um, events and, and welcome the residents, do that as like an annual event, so the local community can, with their identification, come in and, and have a free day, I don't know whether you give them a free lunch that day, and fireworks, and just kinda host and say, hey, thank you for having us, we appreciate what y'all do, um, so that's, that's a potential, so we thought, well, if you have that day, it'd be nice to have, have a band, um, so that's why, and in the interest of being transparent, put that in there, um, and fireworks, I know there's rules and regulations of when you can host fireworks, um, you know, it's only so many days or weeks before, after certain holidays throughout the year, so we thought, you know, maybe Fourth of July, or something like that, so just part of the plan, we just wanted to be, um, open and let you know kind of what we're thinking of, but the potential, none of that's happening this year, so, if you have any questions.
Regarding the fireworks, cause Mylan does do a nice job with the fireworks down here across from the, the fire hall, that you might wanna coordinate, that you don't try to do it the same night as they do, because it's a big fundraising event, different stores have got.
Oh, sure, maybe, maybe you'll be late, you know, we're just so new in the process, and we have some ideas, um, I actually did speak with the gentleman who, who does, who works with that in Mylan, so, but that's a good point, okay, we don't want any, you know, just like races, you know, you gotta work with the other tracks till you kinda spread it out, we don't wanna step anybody's foot.
Yeah, cause you're trying to attract the crowd, and some of the crowd is the same crowd, and if you split it, then each make out the money.
Yeah, we need to kinda get our feet wet first, and, you know, get through a season or so, we, we kind of tighten up our plans, but these are more of, uh, some grand ideas, with the exception of the pole barn, that's all.
And your concept about the community day, they used to do that, was it back in the late eighties, early nineties, they did do that.
Yeah.
At the driveway, and then it kind of went away.
That's why you're young, never remember that.
Well, and even on the very last page, is it four? I, I put in there, um, some of the things we would like to do is, is promote some more family friendly activities, you know, the, the races are generally Wednesday through Sunday, so we thought, you know, maybe like a, a late Monday morning, or, or, you know, have some events with children and family or kids, or, or a high school, or a tweens event, you know, have something once a month, or every couple of weeks, just to, um, let the kids come out and spend time with their family or their parents, or some sort of activity, sometimes the libraries will host things like reading to dogs, or something like that, you know, something kinda fun.
So on these, um, proposed plans for the driveway, uh, it says the bathrooms will be addressed when the water is able to be turned on?
That is not, that is not under, oh, yes.
I guess that's on page one, at the bottom down there?
Repairs and upgrades.
Yes, Perry can, Perry can speak to that.
Well, we're just now trying to start to get the wells going and try to procure a public contractor, see what we can do with that, if something was to happen before, obviously we set up the best aisle, the best aisle, outhouse and things like that, but right now, it was, it's gone through a couple of winters, and, uh, pipes are frozen and broken, and, so, it's gonna take some work, I'm not sure intentions will definitely be this summer, but we'll see, but, once I skip the public contractors and everything, kind of.
You've been in contact with the health department for what you've gotta do for public?
We've talked to them, just cash, yes.
So really, at this point, all you're really doing is trying to maintenance, or.
What type of repair was there?
Fast overdue, repair what was there, upgrade it, but really just get it back, not, you're not making any major changes.
So my question would be about the band, and Doug might be able to answer this, uh, would that be like a special use? Um, is that how they did it previously?
They did, they did the Lollapalooza, and I think they worked with one other band, but there was nothing to the degree of what that was, and that was Stella Door, uh, put Lollapalooza on, and they came in toward the special use permit, and it went through the process, and ended up being a huge, huge undertaking, far away, bigger than what any of us ever dreamt for that, cause they had like thirty thousand people there, and it was like ninety degrees, and if you were a half mile to the west of it, you didn't hear, but if you're five miles this way, you could hear every drum beat, then the bad storm rolled through at about ten forty-five, and that shut the whole thing down, cleared it out, everybody left, but their traffic was backed up all the way to I ninety-four on U twenty-three, both lanes, to get off of Plank Road X.
Yeah, that's kind of one of my, my, one of my concerns would be, is if we don't put that under like a special use, that we kind of open the door to, to something like that. Yeah, exactly, you know, I mean, I'd like to maybe have that under the special use, so we can see where the stage would be.
If I could, that's, uh, that band stuff more just like local entertainment, even we're not selling tickets for the band, it's like a local band, you know, we hire locally just to kind of entertain the event that day, if we were gonna have a concert, definitely we should be working with you guys and.
That's kind of what I was trying to separate, what the difference.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's like being a DJ up here, and just entertaining the crowd, so, you know, while with the racing, sometimes we, we can't race, cause we're prepping and cleaning up, so, at that point in time, people are wandering around, looking at vendors, they have some music, they're getting some food and stuff like that, so it's just some form of entertainment to go out on in a racetrack.
And one of the things we're very cognizant, cognizant of is the infrastructure, whatever we bring in, we want to ensure their infrastructure, meaning the bathrooms, and all, and the traffic, that, that we can support it, we can manage it.
Sir, can I, can I get your name and like position with?
Sure, Chris Baxter, I worked at the racetrack since ninety-three, up to about five years ago, and, uh, with these folks now, hoping they'll get it together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Glad to be back.
So you've got some history there?
Yes, sir, I was at Lollapalooza, remember Doug, Leroy?
How about the parking lot, was it Chrysler Corporation or something?
Yeah, that was something, wasn't it, it's a lot of vehicles.
Yeah, it was. So, under concessions, um, you folks say a tavern license to sell beer and wine is in the process right now?
Right.
Was that?
It came with the property, so it's being transferred to us, but we have an attorney that's handling that, and following all the proper procedures and whatnot.
Shouldn't be any problem with selling beer and wine, it's like, everybody should be.
Everybody's trying to see how fast they can drive.
That's right.
We've got rules for that too.
And you've already had discussions with the county sheriff and the fire department already?
Well, no, not yet, we have to find out, we have to meet with you guys first, we need to know what's going on, where do we stand, what are the community expectations, when can we open, um, we've just got a whole list of things that we're, we've been working on for a couple of months, um, but they're all in limbo until we meet with you guys to find out where, where we stand and, and what the expectations are.
And, and I saw that you had also submitted for what your hours of operation, and go the eleven to five on the Saturday, eleven to five on the Sunday, until the July in August, that you're gonna go to the later hour, which helps out for families with school kids and whatnot, especially in that Sunday night situation, so.
That's for the twisted MX.
Okay, all right.
Our hours of operation are on page two, right at the top.
I thought this was a supplemental, I, oh, I got that for the re.
Yeah, that's for the, that's for the dirt track.
Dirt track.
Yeah, I don't know where your, uh, I, I don't have that.
Okay, where's your hours of operation?
That's, that's the one I gave you right off the get go.
Uh, this was for, uh, the dirt track, the.
Right, you're not, you're not, you don't have this?
We don't have that, I don't believe.
Which one is that?
This is what I get.
Some of theirs, somebody had a copy, and it looks like it's really, like this is really tiny.
I printed it off.
Yeah, let me.
Like I say, I can't a lot treat.
This, right? There should be four pages of that.
There is four pages, okay.
Actually, you can see it here, you've got it in here.
Okay.
It's, uh, we don't have our application.
She only has two on her.
Yeah, that's all I got.
I only have front and back, I only have three colors.
I got page three, page four.
I'm missing one too.
There you go, here it is.
Page two.
Page three, this is page one of two.
Probably an upgrade, so you got one, yeah, I got this. Painting upgrade, repaving. Hours of operation, just have to keep.
So about the hours, my question would be, what would happen if you guys have a, an oil spill, or, or something of that, that, you know, like if a motor blows up, and you end up going past that time?
All right, that's what we put in there, the, the general hours, like, no, I lost my notes there. But the, the, the general hours, and, and Harold, maybe you can speak to that. Run from twelve to about dusk, but we put in, um, hours eight to twelve, because people might be coming into the property, so, but the racing hours are generally, uh, twelve to dusk, correct?
Yeah, I believe that's correct, uh, normally they, we wouldn't be open to midnight, but we put that in there just in the event of a weather delay or a problem with the racetrack.
I just wonder if for some reason it does get delayed into twelve o'clock comes, and you guys have final round, at that, at, what, what, what happens at that point?
Yeah, oh, that would be my question, so are we talking about a general schedule, a weekend event, that's not a major holiday or something, you plan on scheduling events that would be done by ten o'clock, so if there is something that holds up, you'd be done by eleven or eleven thirty?
That's correct.
Understanding that, well, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, now, we understand that there may be a weekend, a big weekend, or, uh, you know, that would bring more people, as you get, probably not this year, more like down the road, when you get more, you know, that you could have an event that was gonna run past that.
Actually, we have our, uh, our, what I consider our largest event would be the first Friday of the month, and we've, uh, actually started it earlier, so that we could finish it earlier, and, uh.
That was a major, major problem.
Right, I'm sorry?
That no E T time, that's what you're talking about, the race for.
No, that would be the, uh, heads up series.
Heads up for no E T.
That's a different, uh, that's a different thing, the no E T thing was traditionally on a Saturday, and, uh, it did run late, but we, we're not underneath, we, we don't wanna do it that way anymore, we wanna, we all wanna go home.
Let me suggest.
I'm gonna live across the street.
I got a question, cause the last couple of years, I've been shooting them up the wrong way on the track, and they're like right in front of my house partying, I live right across the street.
Absolutely.
But anyway, I mean, I'm right up across Allison Road, and forty-five years I've had seven cars hit my yard. So, uh, my, uh, I know you guys got tires and stuff down there, but now you guys are shooting them the other way, and it was, I mean, it was like ridiculous, it was no holes barred over there, I called the cops one Sunday, cause they kept thumping them damn cars over there, nine o'clock in the morning till midnight. You drive around the corner, and they tell you to get screwed and get out of there, and traffic was always bad, and they, they always ran past midnight, always, you know, and like I said, I call, and it was, sell your house, you don't like it, sell your house, and.
That was the previous management though, we know how we don't everything.
I understand that, but it's been doing that for years now, to where status quo just kinda carries over, and all of a sudden everybody gets to just do what they want at the driveway, and since we have new owners, and I hope this works out well, cause I'm gonna go over and ask for a job, but, I mean.
Well, you can walk it, you're one of the people watching.
There's, there's, I'm just saying, you know, it's, it was really bad, and, and I hope the new neighbors can, we can work on that.
Cause the Dragway's been there for what, fifty?
Fifty, nineteen sixty-three, yeah.
Fifty-nine years.
I can tell you how many that is.
You know, so they, they've been part of the community a long, long time, and, and that's one of those, when you have that weather event, or you have that engine that broke out, and you gotta clean the track, that the biggest complaint you get is when you get past that eleven o'clock, and we do have a noise curfew and that, so, that's the, the biggest thing, if you can build a bigger cushion that you're shooting for that nine, thirty, ten o'clock, that you're completely done, so you've got that cushion, cause I can sympathize, I've been over there seeing a tar lane outside across Allison Road in one of the front yards of that house, cause they built the great sand pit down there at the end to catch the cars when they couldn't get them stopped, and periodically these drivers thought, no, I'm not putting my car in the dirt, and then they'd hit the, the, the bumper wall at the end, and this launch, and basically right between the cottonwoods down there, I don't know how that car ever made it through those trees, and they're laid sideways in that front yard, that was back when I was, that was back in late eighties when that one happened.
That was our house probably, they were sitting in.
Yeah.
Oh, it's my house. If anyone ends up in my front yard, we'll take care of it.
I got a piece of that car, that was about ten feet away from Michael's play structure, when it finally stopped.
Well, honestly, um, a lot of cars went down that track and didn't end up in that yard, over since nineteen sixty-three.
That's true.
Yes.
Me, um, bring up something that's, um, might help everybody out, one of the problems, my son worked at the drag strip for years, and so he would be home, and, um, you know, at whatever time, and he was one that helped get the traffic out of the track, and usually was one of the last ones out before they locked the gate, then we come to a board meeting, and two hours later, somebody's complaining about them hot rods over there running till three in the morning, well, they locked the gates at one o'clock, or twelve o'clock, one o'clock, didn't matter, I would suggest that you keep a log, every, every race, on when the last vehicle goes down the track, and also record when you lock the gate, because then the township board can look to you and say, Joe Blow over here's been complaining, um, you've got your record that says this is when the track quit running, if they're squealing their tires out on Plank Road, it's not at our track, and that's really what would help the township board.
Wonderful idea for us to keep driving, yes.
That will protect you a great deal, cause yeah, it's, when after the race fans leave, and they think their race drivers have got that, should that wash up to five thousand RPMs?
We intended to stress to our, uh, our customers how important it is that they do respect our neighborhood, because we don't wanna have any problems with the.
Big enough, dude.
Yeah, that's very important, that's very important, so we're gonna stress how important it is to all of our customers, or you can't leave here acting a fool, you know, put, put your house and do it, we don't want, we don't want it here, we wanna get in and out, but I'd like to discuss a few things, um, I know exactly what you're talking about, the, uh, running track backwards, and originally, we were against that, uh, I've been there for several of those, and you are one hundred percent right, that, that ran until three, four, five in the morning, and I personally told people that.
No, I don't.
they'll never let you happen, it's just not gonna work. I wouldn't want that, if I lived across the street, I don't wanna be here in that at three o'clock in the morning either. What we've done is we're still concerned running it backwards from the back end of the track. Cause that's a no prep surface that, that's a big thing right now for the racers. But, that being said, uh, we're, we're gonna start that at noon.
Oh, much better.
Yeah, I wanna be out of there by before dark.
Right.
And then gives us a cushion, if there's a problem, we have time to fix it and still be racing. And make that work. The, the noise you were talking about, the boom boom, that's a totally different thing, that was a stereo competition that we have no plans to do as of right now.
Oh, I love you already. I love you, I mean, it was, it was stupid. We called the cops, they says, I'm not going over there, you know how many guns are in that yard? I swear to God, the deputy says, I'm not gonna stop.
We're not gonna be anything like the old, the old regime here, we're gonna do, uh, we're actually purchasing a lot of equipment to be able to handle these oil downs in a, in a, in a timelier fashion. No one likes to sit in the stands and, and watch the tractor go back and forth, Perry and I both, that's one of our biggest goals. You know, we just purchased a brand new, uh, tire rotator, we got a brand new tractor coming and, and we intend to train everyone in our facility. No one's gonna wonder what to do, we're all gonna have a job and when that oil down happens, I mean, everybody's, is all hands on deck, we're gonna have the EMTs and whoever's available, maybe even the concession workers, I don't know. But we want that thing knocked out, done and back to racing, because we don't, we don't wanna be out there all, we're old guys, we don't wanna be out there all night, we wanna, we wanna get our racing in and, uh, be done at a time, time of day.
So, in, in that proposed plan, you, you mentioned something about resurfacing part of that track? Is, is there, is there a reason why you're resurfacing just part of it, does it, do you have to have like NHRA standards or whatever you have to go by?
We've spoken with them already. And, um, right now, we're gonna replace the burnout boxes, get that cleaned up. First eighth mile of track is good, it's kinda great, the next eighth mile is asphalt that needs to be milled. Fracture compound has deteriorated the surface. And we're going to mill, uh, three inches off to a two lift system there to make it smooth and efficient, so that, uh, we can race there. But, uh, I've already drawn permits here for paving, so.
Yeah, I, I just wondered why you were just paving part of that if it was just, just bad?
It's cost. It's cost.
Well, no, our, our first eighth mile is in great shape, but it's concrete, which is a much better surface for drag racing. But all the fast cars today only run an eighth of a mile, so it's, it's not important to us to run concrete the rest of the track.
And it has been eight, it has been asphalt the last sixty years, so.
Alright. Have we got any other questions, these folks?
Um, the sand drags, I know previously they weren't using those, is that something you guys plan on doing, or you just have it in there just in case? We won't be able to do that this year, but it's something that I'm very interested in putting back in there, I'm a big fan of the sand drags, I used to go there when they were there and I, I thought it was a great thing. And, uh, you know, we're trying to get everything on the upfront here, but we intend to do that eventually, not this year.
When you did the sand drags, was that once a month when they did those, I was trying to remember how often you guys did.
I believe they used to be on Saturday nights, once a week, actually.
Oh, that's that, okay.
Same thing, though, we all run those all night, even, you know, and get in there, get it done and, we'd love to be able to do more than one thing at a time in that facility. That's our plan.
We're so weather dependent that we're trying to find other things and activities to put in there, so we don't end up in the same situation of when we receive them. Of course, with the management being as it is now, um, I, I think that will, the management now, I think just that alone will take care of a lot of the issues that were happening at the dragway, whether it was traffic or whether it was, um, times, hours and scheduling. Whether it was communication and transparency with the township, things of that nature.
I believe that wholeheartedly. And I am a two down, two, uh, two miles down from the drag strip.
Okay. Alright. Well, I don't have any other questions. Thanks for bringing page one and two. No, I didn't have it, I had three and four. Daryl had one and two and didn't have three and four.
Yeah.
So that's why we were.
I'm missing, uh, four, one, two, right here.
You've got more money to buy eighth than I do.
No, my wife's about ready to shoot me.
So I have another question, um. It says Wednesday through Sunday, eight AM to twelve AM? The reason we did that was, like we had talked earlier, we, we planned to have those races done before that, but I wanted to make sure we had time if there wasn't rain delay or an oil down, that we had time to do it. I just, yeah, I just wanna understand that there're not gonna be cars on the track at eight, eight AM, correct?
No, we'd open the gates at eight.
Open the gate. Yeah, what time would, uh, the cars actually hit the track?
It says right, right below that, you'll see races will generally run from twelve to dusk. So those are, are standard, yeah, so we wanted to be, it was, we thought it was better to say, okay, here's our, here's our wide range, but here, here's our plan.
Here's our window. Okay, thank you.
Well, you gotta open the gate for people to get there, to get prepared for, to run a race at noon.
Some of them take two hours to unpack, I guess.
One thing, on Sunday mornings, uh, you might wanna be a nice citizen, talk to the Methodist church. Find out when their major service hour is, but I think they used to try to run some quiet cars during that time, which might be eleven, you know, ten to eleven, Sunday morning or something like that. Rather than have, um, you know, the, the racers now. My understanding, they used to contact, uh, and try to work around that for the congregation, but, uh, you might wanna check again.
Good.
If another church started there.
I, I'm trying to think if they, they have their services at ten to eleven now or eleven to noon?
Well.
If they, they, because it's a small rural church, they have to share.
The one right on plank road there?
Yes, and right by the cemetery, and so with them sharing, it also means that they're having to work around another church's schedule as well, so, yeah, it'd be great to do so.
Oh, we can do that, absolutely.
Share the pastor with three churches.
So, yeah, but if they're not planning on racing until noon, you know, as long as they're making sure, probably will work.
The Sunday is the day we race our bracket car races and those aren't ground shaking tremendously loud cars, so.
Alright.
How many employees do you think you're going to have once, you know, for the first year and then once you get up to speed where you've got the sand drag and everything else, about approximately what, when are you?
Approximately forty.
Forty?
Forty to fifty.
It, it, it varies between, with depending upon the race, et cetera.
It does, and we'd like to man our, our operation up where we have plenty of help and, and we wanna be very, like I said earlier, we wanna be very additional. So, we're gonna try to get the best people we can and, uh, not, not overwork, or maybe have two shifts on certain times, so.
Then, that may be your bigger challenge than getting past talks.
You know, we were concerned about the, the labor, but, uh, it turns out there is those quite a few people that do like to work at the racetracks, we've gotten a lot of applications and it's, uh, that's been good for us, so.
That's good, I'm glad to hear that.
Did you work? We got a neighbor right across the street here once.
I'm sorry?
They say when you work, it's a good patient.
Yeah.
Now, I've been hanging out with Tony too, wife, to put it off on his accord.
Alright. Well.
Where we at?
I can't be cold. And some presented to the township board?
Yeah, yeah, that's what.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to approve the plans from Leroy.
The only thing I'm just slightly concerned about would be the bands, if we just, you know, if we just let it go, I mean, I understand and I agree with them a hundred percent, you know, more likes to be something small, but is there something that we can do before we just, uh, move forward to make sure that it don't get out of hand?
Well, we could simply move to, to, you know, to approve the site plan with the exemption of the bands and strongly encourage the, uh, to try to have the end time prior to that, like eleven o'clock type of situation, cause that, that will minimize your grief and it will minimize the grief to the township supervisor and the board as well.
I say we could, you know, when, when the time comes for that, we can certainly come to you and say, hey, in advance, here's what we're planning before we plan it. And we can, we can go through a plan with the zoning enforcement and whatnot, so we can submit a plan. And I know we're, um, I know you guys like to receive a schedule every year, we will certainly do that. Um, any changes to the schedule, we're, we're pretty limited this year. But we can submit, I mean, like I said, we came in in January, introduced ourselves and laid it all on the table, so we're here to, uh, be different than, than the previous administration and do things better.
Well, we do appreciate that, because I, I agree with, with Daryl's, you know, concern about the bands, it's, we do have a, a desable measurements that have to be matte and sound. And, but on the same note, as you as a business, if you've got a, a blown engine and you're gonna have to spend twenty minutes cleaning the track, you know, if you've got a portable stage you could pull out, whether it's a DJ or you've got a band or, or something that keeps the folks entertained somewhat while we're sitting there in those wood structures. Cause I imagine with the way the weather bender pipe or others splintered, so you wanna keep them entertained and keep them there.
And once again, I'd like to just say that there's, there's a big difference between a concert and, and what more time? Yeah, yeah, I, I just don't want things to get, you know, shuffled together, you know. I'm sure we all have the same thing as well.
Alright, that, we have a motion, okay, to limit any special activities like bands or other entertainment to a special use permit?
Could we word that concert, let it just be?
Concerts, entertainment.
Well, I guess that's the way to do it, maybe we should word this so that they are under the impression that they can have a band for entertainment of their people, but they cannot have a concert and sell tickets.
They're selling tickets specifically for the music venue, that's different than selling, because for a race event and that, there's music in between.
The speakers would be nearly like a concert, you know, just be a small stage, yeah.
Want to comment back here?
Is this a site plan or is this a special use permit?
This is a site plan.
Uh, racetracks fall under special use permits?
It, it does if you go to the five point six oh six, but because this thing has been basically grandfathered and there's the hiccup with the COVID, which has gotten so many things pushed back in businesses that have been having this mothball. There's different things that the state has done within different departments and different guidelines that it's not that traditional twelve months out of business kinda thing that you're starting over. That there's been some different things that that's been challenged in the state and in the courts, so, but yes, you're, you're correct that it's, if it was a new use, new situation, yeah, it would go under that that way. But they've got this written up as a site plan review.
So you.
So it changed his owners and they're still grandfathered, yeah?
Yes.
How's that work?
I, and, and attorney, I can explain that, special land use typically runs with the land. So if you have land use rights to run with the land, you have an easement, you sell it, the easement runs with the land. This is similar and as to what you were speaking about, which was sort of the abandonment question, that's also been resolved, so.
Yeah, but put it in a different scenario, it's like if you, you, you have your house, so you sell it to the next person. And the building codes have changed since thirty years ago or forty years ago when your house was built. That doesn't mean the new purchaser has to upgrade all the electrical or upgrade all the plumbing or upgrade everything to what today's standard is, because it's, it's grandfathered.
Okay, that, I understand that part, I understand that part, okay. Noise ordinance and things like that are wrapped in that too, is it? Cause that's what they used to give us before, it's like, well, it, it was, we don't have a noise ordinance, so I.
We do, but it hasn't changed.
I got a copy of it, yeah.
It hasn't changed.
Yeah, okay, I've called the supervisor at two o'clock tomorrow. Is this okay? I gotta go to work tomorrow, what are you doing?
So, okay, you wanna back up and, and re-summarize your motion, Leroy, cause we didn't get a second on it?
Well, it's somebody else.
Oh, Leroy, you gotta go for it.
Well, I'd have to write it down to make it efficient.
Well, it was to approve the site plan, um, and say, you know, we understand there might be some music to entertain the people that are there, but there would never, under any circumstances, be allowed to have a concert. A venue that was, you know, this is meant to be part-time as part of the racetrack, not to have a band stand in a concert, et cetera. Did that, did that not cover what we were trying to accomplish? And their, their hours of operation are set to run from noon until dusk. They hope to have the gates locked by midnight unless they have an event where they have a problem, so, I, I mean, I'm content with it. Who wants to make the motion?
Someone, give me the go.
Yeah, the chair can make a motion.
Well, I so move. Is that good enough, Anita?
It is, I'll second.
And, uh, so there's a motion, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
If I may, quick question, the, the man, you said that there's been an update on the noise ordinance?
Yeah, it was published last year.
Cause there's a standalone ordinance, I know, cause the one, one I have is from May fourteen, nineteen seventy.
I thought this was the one we could get, you have the updated one, and actually, I think it is on the website, too.
It is, yeah.
I'll let you get it up there.
Yeah, I think it was published last year, Anita?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. So make sure you look into that.
Oh, easy that was.
Alright. Well, I guess we're two second citizens time.
I want to welcome the new owners that have come out with a positive.
You could always tell when they run the jet trucks, couldn't you? Last time I was at, you know, it'd be quiet, you'd think, well, you got done on time today and all of a sudden it'd be this, sound like a space shuttle taking off.
Well, I'm trying to be my way to the summertime, just so I can hear the cars.
I'm five miles away and, yeah, you could hear them run, so.
Alright, is there anything else from the citizens? Hearing none, well, go on to Commissioner Collins.
I'm still confused on the status of our extraction ordinance, I thought it was all taken care of and then I heard somebody that said it was back in the planning commission's lap. I don't know where that's at.
The ordinance?
The ordinance that we approved, five point six oh, whatever.
Yeah, I believe that that's been published, I can double check it.
It's published and passed, it was sent to.
I just asked, I don't.
I can find out.
The last time I went through the listing, I didn't see it.
Okay.
I thought that was something that Ron brought to you guys, the traction and something else.
Well, we sent it, we worked on it, we sent it to the board and I asked about it at the board and they said, no, it's been sent back, we thought it was so upset, out of the planning.
Okay, I'll double check that up for us.
Really like to have that.
Yes.
I have a confession. I made, I made an error in, in one of these that, that Mr. Baxter just pointed out. There are, there are some races, because we wanna push everything back, that may start earlier, so did you say nine thirty?
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, we'd open eight thirty, probably start running around nine thirty as we get done or at least you guys can have a peaceful Sunday evening. Same program's been going on for all those years there.
That is true, that, it's been like that for years.
I can.
Well, we just talked about that more than once.
This is a race, yeah, it's time trials is racing, racing does start around noon, yeah, so.
Those time trials that start at nine thirty?
Yeah, they get loaded, tech them in, they make a couple of time trials and go racing, so we get them out there by six, seven o'clock, and well.
Well, I don't know, it says right here, schedule, you know.
I said previously, though.
I guess.
Is that just one, the one day a week?
It's, yeah.
Which day is that?
That's the Sunday, that's our local guys.
That's the Sunday the day that we just asked you to check with the Methodist church?
Yes.
Now, see, this is the stuff when I start to get really frustrated, cause we just talked about races will run. There's no mention of time trial, so I guess maybe that's on me for not knowing what a time trial is, but, uh.
I apologize, I'm, I'm not familiar with the, the racing process, so, um, it was, it was.
I'm glad you brought your attention now, though, yeah, we'll catch you.
We don't wanna be.
You can still make a second motion, if you want, that, that did.
Well.
I understand.
I mean, if that's the way it's been and they're willing to reach out to the Methodist church. Um, this is something that wasn't part of the motion, so if it turns out to be a problem, we will let you know. How is that?
I can.
Is that fair Doug?
Can you bring in a schedule from previously to show them that it started at nine, yeah?
Well, this is says Wednesday through Sunday, it starts at eight.
Yeah, that's why I asked that question.
No, the gates are, the gates are open. When general operation hours and they said people be coming in and some people takes two hours to unload and set up their vehicles, you heard all that. Races will start at noon.
Yeah, time trials will start at seven thirty.
Where'd you say that?
It doesn't. It says hours of operation and that's what the gentleman just brought up, time trials, in hopes to get the races started by noon. Correct?
So he said nine thirty, not seven thirty?
No, 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 I'm, I'm just.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we should word this, where, where the gates open at eight, I mean, or something of that sort. We have to, I mean, cause otherwise they start opening at six or something, starting at eight or seven.
Nobody's making any noise at early anyways, but, I, I understand what you're saying.
Right, I mean, we gotta regulate somewhere.
You can, you can formally move to reconsider the motion and then put the additional clarifications in that motion.
Did you make the motion?
Man did.
I made the motion.
And to reconsider, it takes a, a motion by someone.
What I'm saying is, I need to make a motion to reconsider my motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I will make a motion to reconsider the motion approving the site plan.
I'll second.
Okay. Now, we're back to where we were.
You gotta take a vote on the reconsideration.
Yep, take a vote on the reconsideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright. Very well. So, explain these time trials, this is gonna make a lot of noise too.
Yeah, it's a, it's just part of the racing process, so it's the races started new, but it's a, cars get loaded, they get tech'd in, they make their, their passes to set up for the racing itself. Same thing we've been doing since I've been there since ninety-three.
Okay.
Nothing's changed, I'll renew decades of schedules possibly.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
When will the gate open, when you unlock that lock and let people in?
Generally, we open it about an hour before we plan on racing, so if we're gonna race at nine thirty, we'd open it at eight thirty, you know? Just to get the people in, give a chance to get set up, unloaded and all that kinda stuff.
So right here when it says eight o'clock, could you open it at seven?
Uh, we don't wanna open at seven, it's too early.
Well, I just, I just.
So you have some people that come and bring your motor homes and are there and stay all night?
Um, we, eh, overnight park, yeah, sometimes.
Okay. So they're buried before eight, does this mean that they absolutely, they might be set up since they've been there all night to run their time trial at eight, eight o'clock in the morning?
We're not running time trials either morning.
Okay.
So are you allowing them to camp there then?
We don't offer any camping now.
But they could, can, can they get in the night before and just stay there and then you guys lock them in the gate?
Thinking about that hundred thousand dollar motor homes, I see go by the house, but, you know, turn around and don't leave for two days. And, and I understand, you know, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not, you know, I just wanna know what's all going on.
Yeah, it's a, it's just a local program, it's a basic deal every Sunday, but for the most part, you know, it's, that's that Sunday program. Saturdays are kinda flip-flop, we'll have a couple of big races on Saturdays, we'll have a couple of small races, you know, nothing crazy. Our schedule's nothing like it used to be before, you know, it's not a national event or all that stuff, stuff we have in mind this year should be adequate in, you know, normal, normal circumstances, what we've seen the last few years, so, no problem.
And, and you know what, we, we understand that and we get that this year. We're trying to do this one time for all years, so we're trying to cover all the bases while you guys are here and in front of us. Because you guys will get this approved and then move on, we're still gonna be sitting up here on this dais, getting our ass roasted. For not asking questions and making sure everything was, uh, all the Ts were crossed and not Is were dotted, so. On this, you've got hours of operation, so Wednesday through Sunday, eight AM till noon, or twelve AM. So races will general, generally run from about twelve PM to dusk, races. Now, where is the slot in here for time trials will begin at what time?
It may be easier if we just say that the racing starts earlier than time trial, that way it's not confusing.
Yeah.
Time trials are part of races, does that make sense to anybody?
Okay, so, so, so when, when I see on here, races will, will start around, uh, generally run from about noon till dusk. If we're gonna make time trials part of the races, then that's different than what we have on here. And it looks like by races, there's an asterisk, although it's a little cramped and I can't see all that well.
Twelve AM asterisk?
Yeah, from about twelve PM to dusk. So, what I'm trying to figure out is these time trials.
Sure.
Especially on a Sunday morning, time trials.
That's the one that, that caught my eye, we just got done talking about making sure we're good neighbors for the Methodist church. Oh no, we're not gonna have any races till noon, I think that's what I heard from you people. Then all of a sudden you start telling me about time trials at eight thirty or nine thirty in the morning.
I can speak to this.
And I'm saying, how can we be good neighbors to the Methodist church, not make any noise until noon if you're gonna start time trials at nine thirty, it doesn't coincide.
And that's my fault, I, I was creating the schedule and running through Harold and we haven't been through this before. And I did send it to, I did send it to Chris the other day, hey, check it out, but he, he may have missed it, so now as he's sitting here reading it again, he said, there's a mistake. And so that's why we're, we're, we're bringing it up, um. We still intend to go to the Methodist church, I'm wondering what actually happened, if this is the way it's always been done or what the issue would be with them.
Well.
But we will certainly vote on it.
Just being good neighbors.
In, in the past.
Yeah, it's, we probably need to work.
When it, when it comes down to, you know, we're racing, you're thinking two vehicles going down the road, the neighbor hears a car go down the track, that's racing to them, so whether it's a time trial or not. The definition is when do cars start running down the track, that's the real question for this board. So when I pull that out and it says generally starts at noon and. Somebody that lives down the road saying, they're running those cars at nine thirty on a Sunday morning, I can't even sleep. I got off work at seven o'clock, I work midnights, so, I'm just trying to figure out what we got. You know, what is the correct time?
Can I interrupt for a moment?
No.
And another thing is, I, I'd like to have on here when the gates open, you know, cause it doesn't necessarily say, it says eight o'clock. But that doesn't mean they can't open at, at five or six, you see what I mean, I, I think that we should have where the gates open at a certain time, the same that we would, uh, and, uh, Sam did, you know, I mean.
That's the way I look at the general hours of operation.
Well, that's what I thought earlier.
Right. Was eight till midnight and then lock it.
But I also thought the races started at twelve also.
Yeah, and, and I apologize.
So I think we should have here the gates open at eight, you know, but then also loophole's gonna be now that probably more people will just start getting in the day before and just parking in there overnight, so then we're kinda, then that's. Then people might complain about that, I don't know, you know, I mean, that's, you know.
So e- each program has a different starting point, on Sundays has always been pretty much the same, we ran the same program for Sundays since I've been there. Saturday's very, like I was saying, sometimes we don't start till noon, um, sometimes we have a bigger race, it might take all day, you know, we definitely wanna get done, give everybody a chance to get some rest and all that stuff. But typically, we start racing around nine o'clock, eight thirty, historically, actually, we've started racing on the weekends, so.
I think you're just calling it all racing.
Yeah, we're interested in racing in general, yeah.
We're not gonna distinguish between, cause if the cars are running, the cars are running.
You know, we're saying we have our general hours, you know, general, generally, it's where we're going, we're gonna be racing, you know, but, uh.
We were thinking the property is open from eight to, if we need to midnight, we hope not, but there will be bigger races occasionally that, they may be, with the weather.
Oh, yeah. Follows the same programs we've been running over the years, so, uh, he asked for some previous schedules we can provide, there's no problem, you know.
So are we gonna go with the gates open at eight AM?
I think we definitely should do something of that sort. For one, that's gonna force him to have to start probably at, at the earliest at nine, so he's gonna get everybody in, you see what I mean?
We could work that the gates cannot open till eight. So, can I ask you a question, what's your concern about the gates open?
Well, because if you open the gates at six, you can get the cars on the track by eight, and I think that's too early, that's what I don't see.
But then that would, our operations would be at six, if we're open at six, that means our operations are at six.
Yeah, well, that's why, like, I mean, I understand that, but it shouldn't be an issue if we just say the gates open at eight.
We could do that, that's not a problem, that's not a problem, if that's what, if that's what you interpret.
I mean, that's all I'm saying, I don't want the words to get confused kinda how we did with the racing and the time trials, I'm just trying to make it work. The gates open at eight and it's pretty black and white, there can't be a.
So everybody knows what's going on and everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
How, so how do you want me to, how do you want me to do that?
You're gonna change this racing.
Just resubmit it and do it administratively through.
It, you know, I mean, it's up to him, but I mean, I would say that we, he, he could approve the, approve it with the, uh, amended, amended times.
With the changes we're talking about.
Okay.
But also I encourage you guys to come out and see it one day too.
Whoa.
Walk it through, I'd love to.
I, I read, I've raced stock cars, I've raced go-karts, I've raced my entire life, so I have no problem with you guys.
No, the process.
Like what Darrell said though, if we don't have this correct, these people come in and they give us a hard time.
Sure.
Because we didn't pay attention to like the races.
Well, that's why we wanted to point it out and, yeah, we apologize.
And it's, it's embarrassing to do this, but we wanted to be upfront with you.
No, I, my thought.
It's not a mistake.
So when we look at this hours of operation, then where it says Wednesday through Sunday, then, and it says eight AM to twelve midnight. Gates open at that period of time. And then, as for racing, racing, whether it's time trials or two cars or one car on the track, anytime a car is on the track. Then that's where we need to get the next specific for what the time is gonna be, you've got variations on that, uh, so that one, the one that we need to clarify that.
Well, well, so if we're gonna have, we're gonna have hours of operation between eight and midnight, but we can't start till, let's say, nine, would that be a good, uh, go with then?
I, I, I don't, I don't know how long it takes for you to get somebody in there and boom, you know, that's, that's your game.
Yes, sir.
I, I mean, you've been doing it for a lot of years, you know what, how long it takes. So if a gate's open at eight AM, you tell us what you're gonna have, uh, what time that car is gonna be going down that track.
There'll be some people that'll be ready in a half hour, I'll bet, and there'll be the people that'll take two hours to get there.
One, one thing you're, are, are really missing here, until they get somebody at the starting line to allow the cars to go down the track, which these people.
Can control.
Yeah.
Are controlling, they, nobody runs down the track unless they say so, okay, so, I don't know whether you're.
Oh no, that's, that's why I want him to tell me what time does he think that's gonna take place.
I think they were trying to say at nine o'clock, they're going to start the, uh, um.
Now, we're back to nine AM to dusk.
Start racing, yes, so.
But that's just one day, right, that one day it starts earlier or?
No, well, sometimes we have two-day races on a, on a Saturday and Sunday, you know, the double event day, but we don't wanna start any early and we wanna try not to race any later. Um, you know, sometimes you race, you don't even know we're there, we have, uh, manufacturer cars, there's a lot of things that, you know, that go into racing, so this Sunday's, uh.
Right, right, but when it says Wednesday through Sunday, eight AM to twelve AM, we just wanna, we just wanna get that tightened up a bit there.
No problem.
And define, you know, racing, time trials, whatever that is.
Is it good to say that we wouldn't race before nine AM?
Right.
Not before nine AM.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm thinking Wednesday through Saturday.
Another question that I have is after the races, at, at what point do you guys lock the gates? If you have some people staying over, you know, and, and people leaving, how do you know at what point do you guys close the gate? I, I'm not saying we should put a time on it, I know what you mean, so, I'm just curious, if it gets to the point where you guys just leave the gate open, you know, all night, you see what I mean? I don't really, I don't think that would be right.
This year we have no two-day races scheduled at all, but we wanna plan for the future too, and that, at some point, that might become something we'd like to do. Um, but generally, uh, the race of Friday is totally different than the race of Saturday, and the people that race Sunday are totally different from them. So there's not a lot of people coming the night before, I mean, that's not something we do. If you're gonna race Sunday, you don't get to come Saturday night to get ready to race Sunday, that's not one of them.
Yeah, and also another thing would be is if some of the people are staying in there, you have the gate locked in those emergency, how would they get out?
Oh, number one, we haven't any of that planned, but we would never lock the gate and leave people in the building, that's it, I mean.
So nobody's gonna be sleeping in there or even staying in there when the gate closes?
If that were to happen, there would be, we would be, security would be there the whole time, I mean, we, we would never walk off.
Leave the property.
Yeah, that would never.
Well, I just didn't know if people were gonna be, you know, leave their stuff there and end up sleeping.
There is overnight parking.
If you guys end up not having security and then somebody leaves.
Oh no, we would never leave our facility unmanned, would they?
Previously, we used to stay there.
What was that?
Previously, we used to stay there, yeah, so we were there with them, locked the security.
But the gates would be locked at that time?
They would lock, it's body court.
And they're not locked, I mean, there's a security guard there at all times, so, we would never leave the gate unmanned.
I don't know anybody coming, so if somebody's gotta leave, that's fine.
Right. I understand that. I'd like to apologize for the misunderstanding, that would be my fault, Pam and I are, are new to this operation. I did word it to her, racing starts, cause in my mind, I was thinking about eliminations and, uh, I, we should have reworded that differently, I apologize.
We all define things in different ways in life, you know. If I can summarize, look for what we've talked about, that, or, a quick question, because you've already kinda clarified about the camping, the overnight camping, cause that. Became a little bit of an issue years ago, uh, under the different management, because the different folks that came in or that they had loud sound systems or whatnot. And they would be partying way until, you know, one, two, three o'clock in the morning, that created headaches for some of the neighbors when that occurred, when there was some of the overnight events that did take place. So, I'm, I'm glad you clarified that, so if I, if I run through from what you shared, is that property, the gates would open, the property would be open, gates open from eight AM to midnight. No cars would be on the track until nine AM and hope to complete by dusk. Uh, that you're gonna contact the Methodist church regarding their services, you're gonna contact the fire department and police department, and then over, no overnight camping at this time.
That's correct.
Anything else I missed that you guys asked, I was trying to catch everybody's comments, or, Darrell, did I get everything on that?
Seems like, um, the only. The hard part that I see a little bit is if people are camping in there and they, and they have a security guard that allows them in and out, and we're trying to regulate that they open at eight. It's hard to do that when they just get, just go in and out.
Well, that's why I clarified, no overnight camping at this time. So, you know, if that's, if you get to the point where you're gonna have a two-day event or camping, they're gonna have to come back for a different review, or if it's gonna be a concert event, they're gonna have to come back in for a review. That would clarify that that way.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, a year or two, if they get that far and they wanna do that, they'll be back any minute.
So we're technically, we're not offering camping, we're on a park, we have to hook up, so, nothing like that, so.
Cause you have that statement, it's a stadium.
Yeah, we don't have any of that, so we're not, we're not camping, so I, I don't want to have one.
Outhouses and, you know, bathroom showers, et cetera, that type of a thing, so.
Yeah. Sure, so, uh, John, uh, what do you, what do you?
Overnight parking.
Yeah, so you've mentioned the gate a lot, what do you, what do you recommend?
What I would recommend?
Yeah, cause it's, it does take a couple hours to, to set up and tear down, you know, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I totally understand. Um, I mean, I would have a, a time of when everybody needs to be out, to tell you the truth, at like five AM, so that whenever the gate opens, because what'll happen is residents around are gonna be like, oh, they're, the, the security guards letting you people in and out, possibly, I'm not saying they're going to. But, I'm just saying, if, if we had everybody cleared out at a certain date other than your security, you know, to watch over everybody's stuff, I don't have an issue with any of that. That means that eight o'clock when the gates are open, only people would be going in at that time, and there wouldn't be any kinda confusion in between like a five AM or four AM, whatever, whatever number that might be. There would be a dead area right there, so there'd only be people going in at eight o'clock and there would be no confusion, you see what I mean? I'm just trying to.
Sounds like we might be making more noise at four or five in the morning, you know, doing it that way too.
Well, you, I mean, how, uh, what, people are gonna wait till four AM to leave?
Wait, that's what you just said, just going.
No, 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 I'm trying to make a certain time, so when you open, there's only people going in and there's no confusion, people going in and, and, and out, because if they leave at seven, or they could just stay there all night, for instance, correct? I mean, we're not camping, but what's the difference?
No overnight parking, I, I changed it, overnight camping at this time, no overnight parking.
I understand, but what would be that deadline at that, I mean, if you, if you stayed up all night, you're not camping or parking, you're just sitting there.
I gotta be up so, an hour after, an hour after.
You see what I mean, or, or so, I'm just trying to have a certain time.
I, I just wanna ask, if, what's, what's the issue if, if somebody was in there and they weren't racing? Cause you might have crowds, people working or something.
Employees are different than.
Yes, that's correct.
Cause employees, you have control over what they're doing, however, the pickup trucks playing for what they're doing, or if they're fixing something, that's different than.
Have to be there to work.
Yeah, cause it's the, the folks that come in for the racing event, the race is over with, and they're out there in the parking lot drinking or whatever type of.
Celebrating.
You want everybody out of your property by midnight, then would be the bottom, bottom line, the gates are.
I mean, the races are done at dusk.
Yeah, I mean, I would say give them a little bit of a cushion, I mean, because as long as they're not racing at, you know, at, after twelve. If it was like two AM or something, I, you know, the time they packed up their stuff, cause I've raced, it takes a while to pack your stuff up. So, if they got done at twelve, and even if they left at two, maybe even three, I mean, they're not making a whole lot of rack at that point. As long as they're out at a certain timeframe, there needs to be a deadline of when they need to be out, because if there isn't, then it's gonna go to. Well, we weren't camping, we just never went to sleep, or we, you see what I mean, they're gonna try to find a loophole, but if there's at least a deadline, then it starts back over.
The, quite, the, the portion that we had in there, the gates are open and then locked by midnight. And you just make that guideline that everybody needs to get their stuff, to have it ready, you know you got one more race at ten forty-five, you better have everything all ready about. Put in the van ready to leave, and head stuff.
I understand that, but I mean, some of those big events, so they, they're gonna go till twelve, probably right at it, you see what I mean? It's, uh, it's not over, I'll be honest, even if they started earlier, but, but what I'm saying is.
If you're worried about the end, you gotta set a time, where you gotta say, if the last race, the last guy on the track is at ten forty-five, you've got till. Twelve forty-five, or.
Yes, I agree, like maybe.
You, you put in a very hard time, so all of your racers, when they come in, they know what the rules are, they know the guideline time, you put it.
End time.
Yeah, they're.
You're burying an end time.
I see what you're saying.
You can't bury an end time, you either tell them a start time and an end time.
That's correct, he is correct.
I mean, they're gonna force those people out anyway, I'm not gonna let them, because they wanna go to sleep.
Oh, yeah.
Get up today.
So, once again, we're old guys, we're old guys, and I live across the street, so I don't want them there, but, uh, I would hate to, uh. This year, we don't have any two day events planned, but I would hate to do something today, I, I don't understand, I mean, we could always come back and ask. For overnight parking, and later on, I have no problem with that, but as we said earlier, you wanted to. Finish this where it's good for not just this year, but into the future, I would hate to say no overnight parking today. Because we do probably, in the future, intend to have a multi-day race.
Right, but, part of that also though is, we're getting to know you, you're getting to know us.
Absolutely.
And you have all the best intentions, Mr. Capoca had the same kinda ideas back in his day. This is a time where it's kinda like the, the honeymoon, where you're gonna find out, hey, she gets up on that side, or gets up this time. I guess that's a little bit the way I'm looking at it, is that.
I think you're gonna be happy with your new, like, yeah.
That's what, that's what I sincerely hope, like, on the same note, if we put it in there, that gives the township board. Guidelines and guidance for what they're going to expect out of you as well, and then also for the neighbors, because when the guy calls. At twelve fifteen, because somebody's loud, putting something in the trailer, or something's going out. That's where, you know, the documenting that Leroy suggests about what time you lock that gate, boy, that's gonna help you guys a great deal, because. I've gotten the calls in the middle of the night, and I know Leroy's gotten the calls in the middle of the night.
We will do that for sure, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
What about if, um, I mean, what if you, if you allowed them to have overnight parking, but just not have. The racers or the spectators in there, but just.
Well, there wouldn't be any spectators, I have.
But I'm trying, trying to help them out, like, trying to find a happy medium for everybody, where there's not gonna be loud music, no partying, no, no noise. But they might have their stuff in there, so they would be a little ahead of the game when they showed up on Sunday to go race, you see what I mean, so I'm trying to work with everybody a little bit. But not, you know what I mean, trying to make it so it's not loud music and people out there drinking at two, three in the morning, and after the race has stopped at eleven.
That, that comes back to like your racer entry, when they come in and they sign that liability waiver, waiver that's probably twelve pages long now. Uh, because they're racing, uh, that, in that, that's got the guidelines about what time, and the quiet times, and different things like that.
That sounds more like a, a management issue of whether or not we allow people to do that, and, and we're, that's what we're trying to say is. When we get there, we're not going to allow these people disrupting all the neighborhood, and, um, and we're, we've. You know, we're not gonna do that, so.
We just want it on paper that way, we, we understand what you guys want.
Documentation.
So, if the folks, if we, we, we push them out, but they wanna come back the next day, we, we have, a lot easier for us to control them if they're inside the gated area. With, you know, security and all that stuff, now all of a sudden, they're, you know, somewhere else, you know, you know, having problems, you know, so we, we could.
What I've been trying to say for a few minutes is, I really have no problem with your overnight, if they're gonna be there again tomorrow. I don't have a problem with that, as long as they're abiding by, you know, Joe Q. Spectator and the guys that are done racing, and they won, so they wanna party, they need to get the hell out and go home, I would think, if they're not gonna be racing tomorrow. I mean, I think that's just courtesy, it's no different, and I go into a farm show, and pulling up the damn field, and send our generator beside the camper.
You can use.
I, I understand.
Pay a permit.
Right, so, I don't have no problem with that, we're going back to, my thought was, we started this by, uh. Saying we were gonna be good neighbors to the Methodist Church, we weren't gonna make any noise till noon, and now we've got hours changed to nine until dusk, how do we deal with Sunday?
The comment was, is they would schedule, because not every car racing down the track makes a lot of noise.
Very well.
There are some that don't, and then, those are the ones that would be slotted between. Let's say ten and eleven, when their normal church services. And then, go ahead, make all the noise you want to after that, that's what they would, that's what. Was the agreement with the Methodist Church years ago, now whether they followed it in the last few years, I don't.
We're more than willing to work with the Methodist Church and all the neighbors in the neighborhood, once again, I'd like to take the credit for this misunderstanding. I am personally the one who thought it would be better to start the races earlier, to get people out of there at an earlier time, I guess I didn't. Think about that, um, we are more than willing to adjust the hours, and I know we need to come up with something right now, I understand that. Uh, the reason that I thought it would be a better idea to start earlier was to get everybody out of there earlier on a Sunday afternoon, that, that was my thought. There's no doubt, um, I guess we'd have to work with the Methodist, Methodist Church, and we would run the, the, the quieter cars. Earlier in the day to try to work around them, but, uh, we, we have no problem at all adjusting the hours on Sunday to whatever works best.
And we would appreciate the, the overnight parking, because we would certainly manage it, I, I find it hard to believe that that's the way it's always kinda run. That we can't come in in comparison to the previous management and.
I, I realize.
So however you want it, word it, you can word it for you.
Big races, I, I.
They got a lot of stuff, they got a whole.
Right, and they're gonna run one class, or maybe they bring two cars, they run one on Saturday and another one on Sunday, so. I understand that, I don't, that wasn't my, that wasn't my issue at all.
And we will work with the Methodist Church, too, we'll put them on.
That was the one, when this changed from, I was looking at this as no noise until noon.
So was I, until about twenty minutes.
All right. So, where are we at, guys? Doug, put her together.
That, the, uh, the property is open from eight to midnight, the gates are open at that time period. Uh, the question is, do you guys wanna put in a, a cushion that no more than an hour and a half after racing, the gates must be locked? If they can't get their car loaded up in an hour and a half after they're done running.
The, the only problem is with that, is it's a, it's a moving, it's a moving goalpost, kinda like Leroy.
Well, I, I know, so then you're.
So, what, what happens is.
The gates are locked at midnight, and that's where I was at all along.
Or have a, maybe a one o'clock, or.
No, that's, that's.
But the thing is, well, the thing is, if you say an hour after, and, and a, and a resident all of a sudden gets used to them. Stopping at eleven, while all of a sudden they have a, a later night, and they're gonna be, be like, now they're going past the deadline, we really did not, because this, this. Goalpost is moving back and forth, you see what I mean?
So, all right, so, Darryl, you want them to lock the gates at one, or you want them to lock the gates at two, or you want them to lock them at midnight?
To me, I mean, to me, I, I, I think that, uh, I mean, just cause I've raced, I've, and I've, uh, had trouble getting my car in there if they crash a car or whatever, trying to get it loaded up. I would say one thirty or two, I mean, to be honest with you, that gives every, to get out, I mean, you gotta go get loaded, you know, get everybody out.
You should just state it this way, with exception, just do it at twelve o'clock with exception. And hopefully, and the exceptions aren't going to be too much.
Exceptions up to two.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I mean.
I mean, so everybody aims for that, if you're not racing at dusk or eleven o'clock, everybody knows that they're supposed to get out by midnight. But nobody's killing themselves if they gotta probably get home.
I'll, I'll read what they've got down, gates are open from eight AM to midnight with exceptions.
I would say exceptions up to a certain time, though, cause I mean, we almost need to have some kind of a, a, a deadline. Cause you could try to say this exception stuff either.
We, we. Yeah, I, I know, we, we're, I mean, we're moving this back and forth and back and forth. We need to come up with a time, if you think two o'clock is good, why wouldn't you say two o'clock? That's two hours after the race ends, two o'clock, have it be done, you, you know what I mean? Two o'clock, and that's, and there is nothing else, it's, it's two o'clock.
Yeah, let's just do that.
You know, there's no exceptions or none of that, it's at two o'clock.
Why don't we just do it two hours after the races are done?
Cause that's the moving goalpost he was talking about.
That's right.
And then the residents.
What happens if the race, most, most weekends, they're done by ten or ten thirty, and then they have a rainy day, puts them back two hours, and now they're not done until twelve thirty. And, or midnight, and somebody's upset because they're there later than what they were the week before.
So, two hours.
Two o'clock.
That's it.
Cause I can tell you, when there's noise at one thirty in the morning.
We all hear it.
Trustees will hear about it.
Guaranteed, and I think that's why.
Yeah, so.
We've said on the board, okay, we've got beat up, almost every, every meeting from.
Charge out to be fair to the residents.
November.
Oh, yeah. And that's why we're spending so much time on this.
Yeah, but two o'clock in the morning isn't gonna solve the problem, because now you got people leaving, anytime they want to.
Up till two o'clock, that's why I laugh.
Is, is it the people leaving, or is the race car noise? Cause, cause we can have no one just, you know, run after midnight, you know, a lot of them wench their vehicles and their trailers anyways, and stuff like that, you know, so. It's just a matter of them taking down their awnings, packing up all this stuff, packing it safely, so they don't destroy another whole park.
If you remember in the beginning of the meeting, I said you need to define when you lock the gates.
Yes, sir.
Because there are people out there, and they get done racing, and they still think they got the fast car, so they go out on one of our side streets. Side roads, on Plank Road, and just squeal their tires going by, I mean, look at all the neighbors as you turn out of Snow Road. On the Plank Road, so now they say, and the neighbor over in Ostrander Road, he's, he happened to wake up in the middle of the night, and he said, they're still racing at two o'clock in the morning. Well, you lock the gates at twelve o'clock, you quit racing a long time ago, so when you come to the board meeting, the board can say. On such and such a date, what time do you like the date, you were locked at two o'clock. It wasn't our people out there racing, squealing the tires, that's all I'm trying to do, is protect both of you. So, that's why the original comment was, if you put, write down the date or the time, when you, when you shut the. I mean, I'm quite sure if somebody crashed their car, and they can't get it back on the trailer, I don't know whether I'm gonna leave that. Thirty or forty thousand dollar engine laying on the track, and I'm driving down the road, it ain't gonna happen, okay, I'm gonna be there. All night long, until somebody comes and picks it up.
Well, that's why we were trying to do that two o'clock thing, is so that that happened.
Done at two o'clock, he's not, he's gonna be there all night protecting his car.
I mean.
But you're not gonna have forty people there all night protecting cars.
Right, but if you say twelve o'clock.
You're, you, you know, we could.
It can't be twelve, because if they're finishing at twelve, they can't, if that's possible.
We, we could, we could go back and forth and beat this till.
Basically, the way I look at it is, we have to assume every single race is going to end at twelve o'clock, so. Just assume it's gonna be at twelve, how much time do you guys think it's gonna take then, from twelve o'clock to get your stuff?
Two o'clock will be fine.
Would that work for us, two o'clock?
The bars are closed, everybody should be home by two o'clock.
Exactly.
And you guys can, you guys can do your own thing, you guys can tell them it has to be twelve or one, you guys have our cushion. But try to get them out sooner, so that it don't get to our deadline.
We don't want that to happen, we're gonna do our best, we're gonna have good equipment, we're gonna try to get everything out of there, like, you know, if there is a problem loading something, we're gonna have a high load there. We're gonna, we're gonna have a record there, we're gonna be on top of it, we're not gonna leave it hanging out. Two o'clock is a great number.
And that's, that's for the racers, that's, does that also include spectators?
Spectators, I think, spectators should be gone way before that.
They don't have to go home, but they can't stay there.
You have a rare song like that.
Happy trails, right?
Okay. You got this, Doug?
He does, yeah, I think so, gates open at AM, and locked at two AM, no cars on the track until nine AM. Basing to complete sometime till dusk, uh, contacting the Methodist Church regarding services, contacting fire department, police department. Uh, no overnight parking at this, or that, what was your discussion? So you don't want that included now, no overnight parking.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, if somebody needs to be there tomorrow, I can't see.
We'd like to leave that in, if it's possible.
And we will manage it.
You, so you would like us to leave, so you can have overnight parking, which we'll manage.
Yeah, but they haul all that stuff, and we got people coming from the U P sometimes, where, where are they gonna go?
It's not camping, they come self-contained.
And we will manage it, Perry will be all over that.
Great, and you're gonna document your opening and closing times.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else to the grocery list?
Milk, eggs. The only thing I would say is, I would just recommend on your guys' end, to just put maybe like one o'clock, understand we're allowing two, but just. So that the, the racers, because if they think two, they're gonna be out at two thirty, everybody always runs late, so just on your end, I would put on your guys' information. That they close at one, I'm recommending it.
Bar time and track time.
With so much hesitation, I would work, why don't you guys do what you've been with egg industries and have them come back, and that way. The board, you know, the PC can discuss and bring issues to them, and.
Part of the challenges, they've got dates coming up in April, and they've gotta get a race season under, underway.
We think we got this now, we've spent enough time.
Cause, cause, a lot of, a lot of this is no different than what previously.
I'm sure they'll be back next year anyways, to tell us what their updates are gonna be, what they wanna do.
Yeah.
So, we're just trying to minimize how much changes we have to make next year.
When we come back with our new schedule, we can update you then.
Okay. So, there's a motion, make the motion.
So move.
Read it again for the record, sir.
For the record, gates are open from eight AM till two AM, no cars on the track until nine AM. Hope to complete by dusk, contact the Methodist Church regarding services, contact fire department, police department. And, uh, document all opening and closing times, is there anything else?
Sounds like a good motion.
You sounded like all the races are gonna stop at dusk.
Well, tentatively, that's what they had in part of.
Right.
That's what we're shooting for.
Yeah.
But if you, with the exception, it says a bigger about it.
To, to dusk with.
If you're happy, we're at.
How about that?
Right.
Okay.
No cars on track until nine AM, to be completed by dusk with exceptions.
Very well. I have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll stack it.
And we got lots of support now.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I believe we've got this.
This was fun.
Thank you so much.
No, 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 no add-ons, right?
Putting this away, back to, uh, back to commissioner comments, and. Was there any more?
No, are we working on the master plan basically, or the solar system?
Right. We, we tabled it earlier to talk about master plan, to make sure we have budget to have a workshop sometime in June. We'll discuss if we can do that in May, when we find out what the budget is.
So next week, we should review our solar overnight, is that what we should look at?
Well, there's moratorium, we can, uh.
Probably still, she's working on it, correct?
So, I've, I've been working on it, I just wondered if you would go work on it at the meeting or not.
Now, we've, we've taken those eight pages of notes, and took all the different comments, and started doing the reviews and stuff. We found some of the, uh, the comments were very flawed, especially about the birds poofing into, to flames. Cause that's a completely different type of the solar apparatus, and that was a, a. Especially if they're birds poofing into the flames, cause that's a completely different type of the solar apparatus, and that was a, a furnace utilizing mirrors. As opposed to a solar panel, completely different, that was back in twenty fourteen, and that one's actually been decommissioned, and I actually talked to a person that had this in place.
The whole reading I have, the solar panel is only affecting seven hours a day. And that's not really showing, well, the other thing is, the peak time that they collect is at seventy-seven degrees Fahrenheit. And when it's colder or warmer than that, they don't, are not as efficient.
Yeah.
My problem with this whole mess is, we can't buy wheat from Russia, and we're gonna put a solar panel over a farm field, makes no sense, but, that's me.
But is the property a large choice?
I'll gladly, I'll gladly do a good ordinance, but I.
Well, I think that's the important part, I don't disagree with you, but my thoughts was, all from the beginning, if we have, you know, everybody comes in, the solar people come from other townships and they complain about this whole thing. And there's a lot of the problems that have happened, has happened in townships where they didn't have any ordinance. I said, I said, we need to write a good ordinance, which we, I thought we've done a really good job, I'm not saying we can't tweak it, cause we can't.
Which we have.
But, you know, in three years or four years, it'll be hidden behind a row of trees, you know, or several rows, it's, there's plenty of studies showing it doesn't affect that property values. Once that's done.
No, there are, there's.
There are plenty of studies, so, this needs to be, it's my turn.
Okay, okay. Yep.
Okay, and we should have an ordinance that protects the township and still allows the landowner the decision to make what he does.
One thing that I wanna say about the property values, I want you guys all to ask yourselves, it's pretty simple, you can look at any kind of study, whatever you kind of information you guys want. Your house that you're looking at, and you pull in the driveway, it was surrounded by solar panels, and it was the exact same house sitting right down the road. Would you buy the one with the solar panels around it, or would you buy the one that doesn't?
But once the screening gets matured.
I'm not, I'm not talking about any of that, I'm saying you pull in there, and one of them has solar panels.
Are you gonna see the panels, are you gonna see the screening?
How do you know?
Well.
That's what the ordinance is, the ordinance puts that in, cause the bottom line, I talked to people.
Yeah.
The ordinance, we're trying to protect that.
Trust me, I mean, you, any kind of study, I know, I understand if you guys are getting money from it, or whoever's getting money, obviously it wouldn't bother anybody, but I'm telling you, the people that don't, and they live right next to it. Would rather have a house that doesn't have next to, that doesn't have it next to, I mean, it's something.
Not everybody.
There's no comparison, I'm just asking, I mean, if you guys have a problem with it.
I live down the street on Ostrander Road, there's some houses that are far more embarrassing on Ostrander Road between me and Seabreeze than there would be with a screened solar system.
And solar panels don't have four-wheelers or motorcycles trespassing into my cornfield, they also don't have loud noise, they don't complain about the dust or the oil from my livestock.
I understand that.
And I know some people who would prefer solar because they're better neighbors than what some people in homes are.
I understand what you guys are arguing.
I would, I would prefer to not have.
Why ordinance are created is like the home that you're talking about that decreases the value from the person that lives next door? That same ordinance should affect the person that has a solar pit farm right next to them too, that's decreasing its value.
But, that same argument holds true for gas lines, oil lines, any type of transmission lines, specifically the oil line that went through, the gas line that went through up here in, you know, Washtenaw County, Lenawee County. Everybody was beefing about that, there's a subdivision built within fifty feet, hundred feet of where the line went through, those homes have all been sunned to thirty or forty percent more than what they were before it went in.
Okay. If, if it isn't a big deal, and there is no problem, and it doesn't decrease your value, why are these solar panels companies going around, like Apex, talking to all the neighbors and giving them money? So that they don't complain about it, give them three thousand a year, if it doesn't decrease the value, it doesn't affect them, and why would they do that, that doesn't make no sense.
That's the difference between Mylan's ordinance and our ordinance, Mylan's ordinance allowed that situation for the change in the setback, then you're participating in par, that's where there's a difference, read Mylan's ordinance.
So you're saying they can't come to us at all?
No, not, not to our residents for changing that setback.
We were tired, you were part of that, we were tired of what I thought was a good order.
We have a very specific, Mylan has a different one, I've read nine different ordinances, and so it's different.
That's it, they changed the setback on some of them, but even some of them, that gives them the option, but they don't have to accept that option, even if it's adjacent to the road, how's that affecting their setback? When they're adjacent to the road, they can only get so close to that road, they're still giving them money, so how is that changing the setback?
In our township?
No, I'm talking about Mylan, you're saying that the reason why it happened.
It's allowed in their township ordinance that they then become part of the solar program, so it changes the setbacks, read the ordinance.
I understand that, you're saying the setbacks, if they're across the road, they're adjacent to it.
Yes.
That setback can't get any closer to them.
No, no, what, what's happening is, the ordinance first says, you have two hundred foot setback, okay, now this neighbor says.
I, I, I understand.
Unless you're participating parcel.
Right, now if I wanna participate, I can say I'll have a ninety foot.
I agree.
And I get some money.
But if you're adjacent, there's a road right here, and they have to be so far off the road, and just cause the solar panel's on this side of the road, they're paying this person over here, he can't get no closer, like you're saying. They're just using that same argument for some of the other parcels to buy these residents, when they're not bringing it any closer, they're just doing what they don't complain about, that's crazy.
Across the road is different than sight.
I understand that idea with that.
Because you've got a root right.
Now, that one I would understand, if they're giving you money to use some of your property or get closer to your property, those ones, yet I'm telling you, that, that's not the only thing that's happening.
Oh, that's what they were talking about. And they didn't write their ordinance well.
No, they didn't, and that's why some of Mylan residents are coming over here and complaining, and actually, one of them, then when, the more that we interviewed him, the reason they were upset is because their property wasn't included in it.
Right, so they're not gonna get the money.
It's dollars.
Still at three or four meetings, and it turns out, his big beef is, is he's not where they're gonna build solar panels, so he's not gonna get any money, so he's gonna bitch about it. That's why we, I promoted not having an overlay district that was improperly done by our former zoning administrator. Because I thought it's not fair for government to choose winners and losers, so it should be on Ag One or Ag Two land, and, and I said that, and I said it out loud, and I meant it, you know.
So what else is, what else is on agricultural land that is not consumable?
Trees, but that is consumable.
Trees.
That is consumable, wetlands.
Wetlands, couldn't be in any wetlands anyway.
But the bottom line is.
The bottom line is that they're.
But bottom line, it comes back to landowners, we have people in the township that have landowners, and granted, many of them are farmers, and that is part of their business, that's part of their asset, and they have to manage that asset for perpetuating their livelihood. We lost five hundred farms in Michigan last year, out of the forty-five thousand we had, we're down to forty-five thousand, we lost five hundred farms, some because of age, some because they can't financially do it anymore. So you're seeing consolidation going on, so it has to come back, you have to manage it like a business, the land is an asset, we borrow against that, and is approved use. Now, when people move out to the, the country, and they see that beautiful field across the road, they're not paying anybody to look at it, they're not paying for the view shed, but, that person, they're assuming it's always gonna be there. That is part of a farming agricultural business, and like for the few families that are talking about this, they're talking about leveraging that money that they could get off that forty acres or whatever, so they can buy the neighboring farm or expand their base farm. It's an asset, cause I don't know how many people in this room have got a million dollar debt, cause it's not comfortable, you don't sleep well at night, and you're managing that, and so that land is part of that. And I can speak from it, because I know how much debt I have, and you start talking about two hundred and forty-eight dollars an acre just for fertilizer, put corn in this year, Mylan credit is monstrous. And every other farmer who farms full-time in this community, which are the number of us that own most of the property, man, our necks are out there. And so when you restrict our ability to manage our asset for the greatest value, or to help us structure, cause sometimes there's a fellow in our township that sold a property in Lenawee County to a very large investment group by Chicago. They're demanding high rent, the reason he did that on that one farm was so he could get enough money to pay his siblings off, because when his father died, he did not have the, this, a state structure.
They never can, it's.
You have to manage, it's a business, the land is a business, and it's not your land, cause you're not paying the taxes, you're not paying the rent, you're not paying the debt, you're not paying the interest on it. You're not, and granted, that land is also paying for schools, and there's no kids going there from that field, so they come back to that land, it's private property.
So, real quick. I got a question, I, I just had a couple of questions, so how much does somebody on PA one sixteen pay per acre?
They pay, in Monroe County, we pay, in London Township, we pay about twenty-four dollars an acre, and it all goes into the township, it's all paid in.
It all goes, whether it's one sixteen and add stuff.
Okay.
In Augusta Township, I can tell you about twenty-seven, in York Township, I've got bare ground, I paid twenty-eight dollars and forty cents an acre for that land.
Yeah.
That all goes into the township, the township receives it, everybody receives it, PA one sixteen, no, I'll explain to you.
Hold on. Yeah, no, I understand, why was PA one sixteen created?
Because we paid so much in property taxes, that created that circuit breaker that it was at seven percent of your household income net, then it was moved down to three and a half because.
So it had nothing to do with your guys' bad years and good years of farming?
It, because, yeah, and that's what it comes back to.
So, can you tell me how there's one bad year gonna be with the solar farm?
Pardon me?
The solar farm, can you tell me one bad year, predict one bad year?
Then those, and those farms, they will not receive anything from the PA one sixteen, they receive nothing, they receive zilch, but it's, it's a pause.
Why should I get the same exemption on the farm?
But it'll still be.
Essentially, Department of Ag and the state puts that PA one sixteen contract on a pause, and I had the visit with some folks from the department just back last Thursday night, and they kinda got giggles on a couple of my comments. But it comes back to, it's a pause, now, but granted, if you're getting, now, listen, if you get, let's say you've got forty acres, and you're gonna get eight hundred dollars an acre, woo-hoo! Guess what, your income's gonna be way up, you will not qualify for any PA one sixteen on any of your farm contracts, that's in the contract.
Yeah, you personally.
Yeah.
But what about the, what about the business that should be under commercial or industrial, why aren't they, why don't they have to pay commercial or industrial taxes?
They will be. They will, they're gonna be paying personal property taxes.
And the, oh, the, the farmer is gonna be paying personal?
No, no, the solar folks pay that.
Yeah, on their money, that's correct, on their money.
Right. Right. Right.
Not the property.
No, the property, that farmer still pays the property taxes.
The farmer is going to pay the property tax, he's not gonna get farm exemptions because he's gonna make too much money.
Right.
I understand that, but it's still under PA one sixteen, and they're only gonna pay tax on the money they made, not the property that it's on, you're only, but yet you're back under the PA one sixteen.
No, you still would be paying the property taxes.
Yes, I understand you're gonna be paying the property tax at a very low rate.
No, it's still the same rate, because it's still farmland, and that, the solar rate is personal property, they're gonna be paying hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Same rate. The township gets the money every year, it doesn't matter if it's a key.
I understand where you guys are coming from.
Yeah, it's, it's taxes.
We need to go through the PA one sixteen percentages and stuff like, we need to read that first before.
Yes. So he's gonna be paying the full amount?
Yes.
I could, I could put.
Under your personal, yes.
Let me talk, let me talk.
It's a rebate, and you might be twelve months before you ever see that, and it's.
It's only when you're not profitable.
Okay.
Yeah, when you're not profitable.
It, it's only when you're not profitable that.
I'm not talking about the rebate, that's a whole nother deal, where you're getting money back, I don't, I'm not, that's what the fee was, you see it?
So, so why is it an issue?
Because, you, you, how much are you paying per acre then?
I just.
When it's on pause. When it's on pause.
We're just saying.
That's my point, they're gonna be making millions of dollars, you guys only paying twenty-seven dollars an acre, and they're only paying the tax on the money that they're making, that's my point, you're not getting a rebate, I understand that, cause you're getting too much money, you're not gonna.
Cause you're then paying income tax, you're gonna pay income tax.
That, that don't come to the township.
No, but you're gonna still get the same amount, listen, you're gonna still get the money off their property.
The township would definitely say one.
Yes, the twenty-seven dollars per acre.
Right, then.
Well, we always been getting that.
No, the solar folks then pay a personal property tax, which is gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars, much, which will go to schools.
Yes. We don't know what that is, you know, that, you can't say what it's gonna be.
It depends, it comes back to the assessment.
Yes.
And that, that is, no, they actually think.
It could go zero, it could be zero.
No, no.
We can't control that.
It's under the tax code, it's personal property tax.
Either way, the, the township, they'll, they'll get absolutely nothing less than what they've been given, and they should get personal property tax off from the panels from the solar company, or if the solar company sells them to D T E. So there should be more money for the township, absolutely, I, I don't know.
But it can change.
Well, it, it's a good. Anything can change.
The state, the state can change certain money.
Not if we didn't allow it to be put under it.
But, but the problem is, is, if we have no ordinance, hold on, if we have no ordinance, you realize.
I never said no ordinance.
If we have no ordinance, well, that's what it sounds like.
I'm saying it should be on a PA one sixteen, that's all.
If we have no ordinance, it can still come, and we would have nothing to say about how it gets done, that's why I wanted to have a good ordinance.
No, I agree.
And the PA one sixteen is a, is a contract between the agricultural landowner and the state, it really has no value.
If it doesn't benefit them, they'll be trying to put on PA one sixteen property.
They're trying to say that they would rather leave it paused and keep it in PA one sixteen, so if they decommission the solar panel, which I thought we did a pretty good job of putting funding in to make sure it was taken care of when it was de- decommissioned. Then it is still in a situation where it goes back and becomes agricultural land to grow wheat or corn. We even put, remember, I come up with the idea when I was just sitting at the end of the table, four of us in the middle, that we should have that soil tested before, that part of the decommissioning is gonna put that ground back to as where it was, you know, so that it'll be.
Another question would be, is there any toxic materials, if that thing snaps in half, if it snaps in half.
It's next to nothing, it really is.
So you don't have to have no hazmat come in if they snap it in half?
No, no, you don't, actually, that's.
Do you realize there's more, we get more pollutants from the airplanes that dump their extra fuel before they land in Metro, right over my house and your house.
I'm not saying. If you ever notice, he dodges the question, you know, they'll always dodge the question when you ask that question.
Cause.
They say, well, we're not sure which panels we're gonna use yet.
North Carolina State University.
You told some months ago, I didn't.
If it's not broke open, it's, it's, it's safe if it's not broke open, kinda like a specimen.
But it's next to nothing in it, for what, it's very, very negligible for what.
Are there any other commissioner comments, Darryl?
Yeah.
It's your turn.
It is?
Yeah.
Well, I, I can tell you, I mean, the solar is, it's huge, and, um, I believe there's gonna have to be a lot of things looked at when that, uh, comes back up before the planning commission. Because of, uh, just things that have come to light in the last few months, and, uh, I for one, um, you know, would like to revisit an overlay district. I would like to revisit setbacks, um, panel heights, uh, I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll be quite honest with you, I am going to deconstruct that ordinance. And, uh, it's gonna be, uh, going over a little bit closer this time around for Darryl, um, I'm being honest with you. There's, there's some things in there that I don't like, um, and there's some things in there that our township residents don't like, and at the end of the day, at the end of the day. If they come in and build those solar panels, they're leaving, they're gone, and you know who's still here? Yes, we're still here, we're still here, so, the citizens of this township deserve to be protected, and I understand it's this guy's land or this guy's land, but you know what? We still tell people whether or not they can put a pole barn up and what size, we tell them how far their setback is on their well to their house, or dig a pond, how big that pond can be. Or what kind of materials you can bring in for a driveway, and, and I'm telling you, I am gonna go through that, uh, ordinance, and that is gonna be tight, and I mean tight. And an overlay district is not out of the question for me, I, I, you know, I, I don't wanna turn into another Erie, I really don't.
Erie didn't have much of an ordinance when it went in.
Yeah, well.
That's the thing, that's the difference.
I, I'm just saying, I, I do not wanna see that happen in London Township, I've lived here my whole life, and that is not gonna be on my watch, I, I am gonna be, I'm gonna be honest with you guys. That is not gonna happen on my watch, so.
All right, anything else?
Okay.
All right, I'm looking for the next motion, who makes a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
They wrote, Darryl, thanks, folks, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.